This is David.
He just walked in.
I see.
Does he have the right chair?
Yeah, I changed it up.
Oh, good, thanks. Evening, David.
I go slow, sorry.
That's okay, no problem. I go fast, so we complement each other. All right, can we have approval of the minutes for September 17th?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, none, thank you. At this time, if there's anybody in the audience that's not on the agenda that has new business, they can go to the podium. Yes, sir.
Phil Bradstreet, Town Meeting Member, precinct one. I had two things. One was a question how the progress is being made or if there is inventorying all of the property that the town owns. I know it was, had been in the past, as I was told it was being worked on, and it might be a lengthy progress. I was just, process, I was just wondering how long.
It's an ongoing process, and I'm sure when the town manager has a complete inventory, he'll bring us up to date. Is that correct, Mr. Town Manager?
We have a draft. Ann was actually, in my office, was coordinating a meeting today with all the departments that oversee the various, you know, components of that list. So I imagine within the next couple of meetings, we'll be ready to bring something back for the board to discuss. Maybe after the holidays, but it's close.
Thank you. The other was, I'm here tonight, I try to attend different board meetings, and one of the things I've noticed is that occasionally, when someone goes before one of the boards, as with this board, you have questions that you ask. They seem to be somewhat similar to, say, this meeting or what the ConCon might ask, planning board, what have you. Is it, would it be possible to maybe produce a checkoff list? Because when I go to a meeting, some people are asked the question that if they'd known the question was going to be asked, it would be fine. They're ill-prepared when the question is asked, and the answer here is, "I don't know" or "about." And I think it's not fair to the people going before the board to not have an idea about what's going to be asked of them. Just for an informational thing, another part of that list might be to add a, the last one, if you're going to go before one of these boards, try to attend a meeting, a prior meeting, to see how the board operates, the types, kinds of questions that they ask. So that you, you or anyone in Danvers is better prepared when they appear.
So, two thoughts come to mind, and one for this board. We can't discuss questions to be asked prior to the meeting.
Okay.
That's against the open meeting law. So perhaps you and I, at some point in time, you can give me some examples of what you're referring to?
Okay.
So we can maybe come to some agreement of what it is you're looking for?
I appreciate.
But I'll tell you, we don't discuss questions.
And I'm not asking you, it's just that, as you've done right now, new business. What is new business? I like to think the question I'm asking is new business for the board. You go to the planning board, ZBA, ConCon, they have questions that are specific to why the board is there to function. And some people just don't have the information that they are looking for when they should know that or should be told to expect the question. Again, dimensions asked, and for an applicant to say, "Well, I think," or "about," is not fair to the applicant.
If they're going to the board. If they're going to the ZBA and they're represented by an attorney, they should know the questions that they're going to be asked because they should have their details in advance.
I understand.
To give to the board.
Not everyone can afford an attorney or chooses to. And for an individual to face a board such as you, made up of several members, it's, again, I don't think it's fair to the individual, okay?
All right. Bill, let's, you and I, let's you and I talk.
I would be more than willing to talk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The board is in receipt of an application from DEEP, Mary Beth Ferry, event coordinator for a charity wine pouring license on Thursday, October 24th, from six to nine at Danversport. Mary Beth, please go to the microphone, introduce yourself.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. I'm Mary Beth Ferry, current co-president of DEEP, the Danvers Education and Enrichment Partnership. This year is our 21st annual DEEP Wine and Food Tasting that will be taking place on Thursday, October 24th, from six to nine at the Danversport Yacht Club. Proceeds from this event help support our teacher grant program. This program provides teachers in the Danvers Public Schools with funds to help enhance the educational experiences of the students in the schools. DEEP has raised over hundreds of thousands of dollars with this event over the last 21 years. During this event, we have samplings from various food establishments in and around Danvers, and we also have Merchant's Liquor Mart as our sponsor for the wine. Tickets are $40 and can be purchased through Merchant's Liquor Mart on High Street or online at supportdeep.org and/or at the superintendent's office. We're here looking just for the one-day charity wine pouring license for this event.
Mr. Clerk, everything in order?
Mr. Chairman, everything is in order.
After 21 years, I would hope so. Bill, any questions?
No questions.
Gardner?
All set.
David?
Good luck, Mary Beth. Thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
Diane?
Thank you, Mary Beth. You do great work.
Thank you.
You are a queen of volunteering.
I just want to actually also thank the community for all their support over the years, as well as businesses, and all town departments for this as well, so, thank you.
Thank you. What's the will of the board?
I move we accept the application as presented.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, none, thank you.
Thank you very much.
She has to do so much work to get here, and then we do this in two minutes. It's a lot of work to apply for a liquor.
Thank you.
The board will consider endorsing two Eagle Scout projects as follow. Placement of veterans-only parking areas within town, installation of signage for Putnamville Cemetery. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two projects tonight. One requires action of the board, the other does not. The first, we have Eagle Scout candidate Jack Walnitz here to talk a little bit about his project. There's no formal action of the board required, but Jack has worked since the spring with a number of town departments on this project, and tonight is an opportunity for him to talk a little bit about what he's been working on and bring the award up to speed. You did receive a packet of information on Friday related to his project, and here's Mr. Walnitz.
My name is Jack.
Welcome, Jack.
What's up? My name is Jack Walnitz. I'm currently a senior at Malden Catholic High School, and I'm a life school and troop guide with St. Richards Church in Troop 155 in Danvers. I've begun my path to Eagle, and I wanted to do something that would honor veterans and the sacrifices they make to our country and our community.
Thank you.
My dad is a veteran and would be, would be here tonight, supported by, was taken to the hospital this morning. He suffers with a severe medical complications, made worse than PTSD. My dad, like many other veterans, come home from their time in service, they must adjust to society. My dad did adjust and was really successful. After he got sick, his PTSD surfaced, surfaced and suffers with neurological functional disorder known as PNES, which is a psychogenic non-epileptic seizures. Many veterans have, or will be diagnosed with PTSD right when they come back, or like my dad, later on life. PNES is common in veterans who have seen combat like my father. Coming home may be first, be greater first, but it's very different serving in a different time and adjusting to the community. There aren't certain way, there aren't certain where they fit because it is so different from where they are in the service. They go from disciplined order in military conflict to a community of concerts and the pavilion and hot dogs and harmony. I can understand it's difficult adapting as my father suffers with PTSD and many medically disabled. Sometimes just getting through the day can be hard on him and on us as a family. Personally, I think our town does a great job honoring our veterans every year on Veterans' Day. Over the years, I've been to many Veteran Day celebrations at the Senior Center or Thorpe School with my troop. I've retired the flags, we have saved the enrollments to hand families who have lost loved ones. I can remember when we would invite veterans to Highlands Elementary School, and these celebrations are great because we make children aware of the sacrifices the men and women give to our country. I've also been a part of many Memorial Day parades where we honor the sacrifices of our veterans who have lost their lives defending our freedoms. I've listened to many great veteran speakers, many great men and women who served. But for the veteran, I think as a community, we can do more. My proposal for my Eagle Scout project is to install veteran parking only signs in approximately 10 different locations, public locations, and I have identified around these towns. These signs would have a phrase that all citizens, young or old, should say to a veteran or any person serving our community when they see, which is, "Thank you for your service." These signs would be a daily reminder to that, that we value their service and we generally want our veterans to know this. I know these signs may seem to us like a simple way to thank our veteran, but a simple "thank you" can mean the world to them. It doesn't take much to thank a veteran. I've seen firsthand how a veteran feels when he is thanked because I've seen this with my dad multiple times. People randomly walk up to thank him for his service. Once we had an amusement park and a little girl and boy walked up to my dad in his wheelchair to give him a star flag that their family retired. My dad holds this in his medical bag, and the star is a symbol of this, "Thank you for your service." He sees every day. There were inscriptions that read, "I am a part of the American flag. I have flown over the home in the USA. I can no longer fly. The sun and winds have caused me to become touted and torn. Please carry me as a reminder that you are not forgotten." These are simple words, but the message is powerful. Veterans need a visual data to remind them that we care, we honor their service and sacrifice, and we want them to know this. Having the veteran parking only signs displayed around town would be a constant reminder that in Danvers, our veterans are not forgotten. Over the last couple of months, I have been in communication with working, some initial logistics and feasibilities discussions with Mr. Morandi, Mr. David Fields, Mr. Aaron Henry, and the DPW. They have given me guidance to my project so that I can present it to our Danvers selectmen, our town manager, and Mr. Steve Bartha. Want to close my presentation by saying the service of every man or woman who have shown their sacrifice to ensure our freedoms we hold should be respected and honored. My Eagle project is just one very simple way our Danvers community do its parts to our veterans. Tonight, I am hoping to get your official approval so that I can proceed my plan this fall to complete my Eagle project as planned. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, very good. Gardner, any questions for the young man?
No, I read the packet we got.
Jack, stay right up there.
I read the packet we got previously in our, in our selectmen's packet, and I'm very supportive of the effort. And with the town, DPW, and the others on board, I'm sure they'll be appropriately located, and thank you very much for your work.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Diane?
Wow, you got me in tears, you know.
You gotta stay there till we're all done.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I'm new to this.
Wow, you are amazing. You're so far beyond your years, that is. What's, which ward did your father serve in?
Um, I, Ward, Ward.
Was it?
Big O.
Well, how's he doing today? Is he okay now?
Um, he's hanging in there. Not really sure what's going on with him. I don't think anyone does that.
It's an awful, awful thing, that PTSD.
Yeah.
And you are so correct. I don't get to the Veterans' Day celebration every year, but I do try to go as the Memorial Day we march in, and then the Wednesday before, I've made it to a few. Peter has us put flags on all of the graves, which is, to me, more important than me marching in the parade, is Peter knows I love to go and put the flags down. We go around and we have a, what is it again? We found, what is it? We have the star, we have a special, special one you found, I don't know, but that was amazing.
We have a Medal of Honor right there.
Medal of Honor, yes. And Peter is very proud of that. Also, you know, I know Simon Mall, if you went up to them and asked them, I am sure that they would want to have this there. And I really love the sign that you've put together, and you write, you know, just thanking somebody for their service, but please know, you know, we're going to keep your father in our hearts.
Thank you.
That's a terrible disease, but you are a great representation of your family, so good job.
Thank you. David?
Thank you. It was a brilliant tribute to your father, and it was very moving. Thank you.
Bill?
Jack, as you know, I've known your family for a long time and many generations, and I have the greatest admiration, especially for your grandmother, Toni. I'm sorry to hear about your grandfather finally passing away, but your dad gave me a call this afternoon from a hospital bed to make sure that I voted the right way, so... I've known David since he was, he was a child. And your whole family is a testament to what we like in Danvers, from your uncle Richie, who basically set up the swamp walk and gave the technical expertise to sponsor that. I've had a lot of great memories with your family in our neighborhood, and thank you very much for this great idea. And Kat, you should be very proud of your two boys, they're great. These two boys that are going.
So, Jack, thank you for your service. We really appreciate the effort that you're making to thank our veterans. It's very important, as you said. Thank you. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the endorsement of the, of this placement of veterans-only parking areas within the town. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, none? Thank you again, Jack.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Peter Morandi will speak to the second application. Colin Hawkins is not here tonight, but you received some material in your packets as well describing his project, and he worked closely with Mr. Morandi to complete the, this project. It's not quite complete, but it's close, and Peter can describe, you know, why, why he's before you tonight.
Welcome, Peter.
Thank you, and good evening. And unfortunately for me, Colin Hawkins is not here, so I have to try to come in after and act like that one. Just bear with me for a moment, and I'll fill you in on the packet that you received. But first, let me say that Colin Hawkins can't make it here tonight. He's on the drum line for our Danvers High School Band, and he wishes he could be here, but I promise you that he has had a lot of interaction from, in my office and the DPW office, and doing his project. And so I'll just read quickly his paragraph here, that "I am Colin Hawkins, a scout in Troop 58 there at Endicott Park in Danvers, Massachusetts, and I am working on my Eagle project. My project is restoring Putnamville Cemetery. Cemetery has fallen into disrepair. The project consists of clearing the brush and overgrowth front of the cemetery to make it visible from the road, filling in sunken graves with loam, and de-thatch, top dress, and hydrose the entire cemetery. Previously completed was a removal of two rotted trees by the town of Danvers Department of Public Works, and the final step in my project is to have a sign placed in the cemetery." So I offer the locus on where the cemetery is located, in case you weren't aware of it, and many people in Danvers are not. It's tucked away on the corners of, as you know, North Street and, excuse me, North and Locust across from Katia Lane. And then there was a two-page legal description, I guess it's a three-page legal description, one of them's two-sided, that you have, and if there are any questions, I'll try to answer, answer that one. There's a GIS printout of the Putnamville Cemetery that we did when I first was, made veteran service officer, appointed veteran service officer, I guess. And that was an interesting project, back in the first year where I was placing flags. And if anybody remembers Pearly Rodrick other than Bill Clock, he took me around when I first got the job and showed me where all these cemeteries were, to ask me not to forget about them. So, right after I got here, we had a GIS project, and they went out, these interns, and located cemeteries and the grave sites. And you can see on here that in the Putnamville Cemetery, there are two veterans from the American Revolution and two from the American Civil War. So, that's there for your, you know, viewing. And the men whose names, whose remains are there are Benjamin Putnam, Zadok Wilkins, from the Revolutionary War era, and William F. Dame and Joseph Anis from the Civil War era. And, let's see, so then he has an email that he included because he has been corresponding with the folks that made the signs, the same sign, and here's the culmination. The same sign that you approved a year or so ago at the Holton Burial Grounds, right down the street. He's going to use that as a template and hoping to get approval tonight as required because it's going to be on town property. And it will, of course, say something different than this, and say something on the idea of Putnamville Cemetery, a burial ground. And he's working with Richard Trask right now to get some dates and a little bit more background on the four men that I just mentioned. And when that comes through, if you're interested, I'll make sure you get a copy of it. Thank you.
That's it, thank you. Diane, any questions?
No, what a great project, and you can actually see it from the street now.
Yep, thanks.
Yep. David?
Thank you, lovely. I never knew what was there, Peter. Yeah, so this is wonderful.
Bill?
I just want to thank the scout for resurrecting the cemetery, it's bringing back the cemetery, some of these little-known cemeteries back to where they were in the '60s and '70s. And I'm having a mind cramp here tonight because I'm trying to remember the veterans' agent before Pearly Rodrick, 10th Mountain Division.
I know.
Thurl Brown, Thurl Brown. Thurl was an avid advocate in finding and keeping in front of people's presence these lots and where they were. And he did a great, great service to the town in many, many years that he served there. Peter, you've done a great job as a veterans' agent since you've been appointed, and I was just handed a note by our town manager that, I guess you've made a public announcement about something?
Uh, well, I, I mean, it's...
If you haven't, I'm not going to make it, but if you, if it's okay.
No, Steve accepted my resignation, but it's not effective until after the first of the year. Yeah, after about 30 years, it's time to...
For the record, I accepted as retirement, not as resignation.
Yeah, it's going towards retirement, I'm going to resign and then retire, I guess. Thanks, Steve.
Peter, it's been a pleasure over the years knowing you. I think I first met you when you were about 10 or 12 years old, when my ex-wife and you were unrelated distant cousins, I think. We had a great Christmas party over in Beverly, one Christmas, and you were there with your cousins. And I've enjoyed conversations with you over the years, especially after you and your wife inherited the Charles Tapley House and had that great once.
We paid for that house, we didn't inherit it.
I know.
And she treats it with a lot of care, thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Peter, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you, sir.
Gardner?
No, I want to thank the, unfortunately, we can't thank him in person, but I want to thank the scout for doing this work and getting this much-needed signage up, so I'm happy to endorse it. And I too want to wish you congratulations on your retirement. You will be sorely missed, and I've enjoyed working with you over the past 15, 20 years.
Thank you, Gardner, same here.
So, please extend the board's thanks to Colin for his efforts in restoring the cemetery. Look forward to having him get the sign put up, and congratulations on your impending retirement. I understand you're going to play a lot of golf.
We'll see what happens. You've got to make it through the next few months. I'm superstitious about things like this, so we're just taking it week by week.
Well, thank you for your service to the community and our veterans. We do need to take action on this.
This requires about this.
Will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we also endorse the installation of signage for Putnamville Cemetery as presented and with the town's support.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you.
Peter?
The board will vote to accept a gift from the Friends of Endicott Park to the Children's Bond renovation project in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53A. Somebody here to speak to that? Oh, we got a twosome.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you. I'm here today with Bill and Lois McKenzie.
Welcome.
As the president and vice president of the Friends of Endicott Park, I'd like to ask them to speak on this, this project, this new initiative of fundraising for the Children's Bond.
Thank you. Evening, welcome.
As you know, there we did a really good fundraiser up there for the nature center. Right now, we want to take on the Children's Bond. We're looking to see if we could fundraise 150 up and around there to refurbish and maintain, do a few things to the Children's Bond and help out the rangers, take care of the animals there. We're asking your blessing tonight to see if we can go forward into our fundraising, which we're ready to kick off. I really have a really good feeling about this one, just as good as the last one we did. It's going to take us about a year and a half to complete it because we're going to do it in phases so we don't stress out the board members or the people that donate to us. If we found out in the past, if you spread it out, you can get more. So that's what we're going to try to do. Are there any questions of what we need to do there?
If I may, clarification to the town manager, what is the gift we're accepting tonight?
I don't believe there's an actual acceptance of any gift tonight. I think Mr. Sam Born had requested an opportunity to talk a little bit about the project, and so I think the agenda slightly misstates.
That's okay, just wanted for clarification. I didn't know if Bill had a check for us or not, but apparently not.
I don't think he's advancing the...
Exactly, from your company. No, no check, no.
Okay, great.
So the board members want to fundraise and, you know, kick this off as soon as possible.
Great. David, any questions?
Nothing, thank you.
Bill?
Have you got a 501(c)(3) in place or ready for this?
Yes, we do.
You work through what, the recreation department or your own?
We have our own.
We have our own.
Your own, okay. Thank you.
Gardner?
What form of fundraising is this going to be, the engraved bricks again? Is it going to be something else?
No, we're going to start kickoff again with a comedy night and just go from there. Do mail-a-thons, whatever it takes.
Okay.
We do have a lot on our plate.
Wonder if they...
I'd like for a lot of grants, too.
Okay.
Yep.
I have no questions, thank you.
Diane?
What are you going to do to the bond? What's the, what is it you're trying to do?
Well, the first phase is to remove and replace all the windows, because they're, you know, they need to be replaced.
And as I've learned, those are expensive.
Yeah. The next phase is, we're not, I don't want to say phase, I want to say, we also want to replace the doors that go into the bond, the sliding door that goes across, the rear door, all the entrances, clapboard it, re-site it, looking into roofing it possibly. Out back where the children actually go out and look at the piggery or the hens or the, we want to replace the viewing area that they stand on out there, and there's a ramp that the pigs and the chickens come up in and out to greet the children. We want to replace that. It's, it's time. Also, where, in one of the, where the chickens lay their eggs, we're going to put all new coops in for them to lay their eggs. So it's basically cleaning the place up, and, you know, we have a good opportunity, we have a really good board that are really, that's excited about this, so we just want to help out and do it.
Yeah, and the young families just love that bond and the animals. It's a great place to visit. I think that's great. I can't believe that you guys are going to do this again, so...
Can't either.
Am I getting an email? Bring it on. Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
So thank you to you and the friends, your committee, for undertaking this project, and it's folks like you that helped Endicott Park stay in tip-top shape. And I know these buildings get a lot of use and they deteriorate, so thank you very much for your attention to this, and thanks for coming to, before us tonight to explain what you want to do.
You're welcome.
Okay. No action is needed at this time?
No.
Or is there?
No.
No, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. Oh, my God.
All good stuff tonight.
So far. I'll count your blessings.
The board will conduct a public hearing and hear a presentation by Land Use and Community Services Director Aaron Henry and Planning Director David Fields regarding Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty, eligibility, and C-1 and C-1A project.
Amazing.
It advertises High Street, but it does encompass more than High Street, I believe, David?
That's correct, there's multiple side streets off of that, and then the section of Maple Street from Danvers Square up to Lyons Ambulance.
All right, thank you. Go right ahead.
Sure. Mr. Bartha, anything?
I don't, David is, this is, he has, he's mastered this presentation, I'll just point out, he asked me what time he thought we'd start this presentation, I told him seven thirty today based on the agenda, so we're pretty close.
Pretty close.
But I'll, I'll let David dive right in.
All right. I'd like to recognize Ms. Peg Zalinski here this evening from the planning board to show her support, so thanks very much, Peg, for coming out for this. To kick things off, I'd like to step back and take a thirty-thousand-foot view of the zoning process. So tonight, we're here specifically to talk about the 40R application we've submitted to DHCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development. Not necessarily the zoning text that we've been working on or that our consultant Ted Brovitz has been working on. So for those unfamiliar, the 40R process and the zoning accompanying it is known as Smart Growth zoning. It's what we adopted in 2017 for the north end of Maple Street, the current hot-wat site, which I believe everyone's familiar with, but for those who aren't. As part of the process, the town's required to hold both a zoning public hearing under Chapter forty-A and this public hearing this evening under Chapter forty-R for the Smart Growth zoning. The public hearing for the zoning amendment will take place December tenth, 2019 of this year, that's with the planning board, so that's a separate hearing, December tenth, 2019, for those who are interested. And just a quick refresher, to date, we've had a public meeting for this project, a site walk of the entire district, two public meetings to discuss the zoning with the planning board, with our consultant, a meeting with all affected property owners in the district, and a meeting separately with all existing business owners in the district. So we did a separate flyer for existing business owners who may or may not have had trepidation about, you know, what are you doing with the district, are you gonna stay? So we've, we've done that meeting, we welcome them back for any future meetings that we have, but just so you're aware of what the outreach we've already done. In the interim, we do have another public meeting scheduled for October twenty-second, that'll be our big welcome-back-to-the-fall kind of meeting for the zoning. And for that, we've mailed all affected property owners, plus abutters, two abutters within three hundred feet, so it was a very large mailing, I think it was about eleven hundred pieces that went out, so hopefully we get a pretty good turnout.
And that is where and what time?
That is in the Tumi Room, October twenty-second at seven PM.
Thank you.
The board did receive, there are copies available tonight of that flyer for the board.
Thank you.
We are anticipating that, we have a packed house, if it's too much, we may have a spillover event the next following Tuesday, the twenty ninth, just so you're aware. So to get right into it, the current draft of the zoning proposal wasn't written necessarily to conform with 40R. So we were writing the zoning kind of in isolation, in conjunction with the public and the planning board and you all, to come up with the best product we could for downtown. After looking at it, the zoning does fit the parameters for 40R, so we thought it foolish, essentially, not to apply for that funding. As part of the process, we've had extensive public outreach, we're going to do more, as I just said, and we do understand that as part of that process, the zoning and this application may result in, it might, it may be changed due to that. That's okay, we're fully prepared to roll with that as it comes. If some state changes do result, we can always rescind or amend our application to DHCD for the 40R. So depending on how that goes going forward, it might not be finalized with us or with the state. But, just so you're aware, our current projections put us in the $600,000 zoning incentive payment bracket from DHCD. So if we're successful and go forward for February town meeting, we can look forward to a check for 600K into the, the fund that we're setting up for the downtown from the state, just for the zoning portion of the, of the 40R. We do anticipate that DHCD is gonna push back on us for our projected numbers. They did last time, they generally do going forward. We do think that, though, we have enough reserve that will maintain the $600,000 bracket regardless of how much they push back, so we have a lot in the pipeline going forward above and beyond the 501 necessary units for that bracket. Other than that, I believe you were provided with the maps in your packet and a, and a brief write-up. So essentially, the application, it was very brief, it's really a checkbox list going forward, and DHCD really wants to know where, what, and how much.
Excuse me, if possible, could you talk a little slower?
Oh, sure.
And a little louder?
Sure.
'Cause I'm having a birthday next week, and I don't wanna tell you which one it is.
All right.
But it's old.
Sure. So I was just saying, so we're in the $600,000 zoning incentive payment range for DHCD. We expect them to push back on the unit count that we submitted, however, we think we can maintain that bracket for that type of payment. But the application itself is, is fairly limited, it's mostly a checkbox form, and what they really wanna know is, where are you doing the zoning, what are you doing, and how much, how many units do you expect? So in your packet, you received a series of maps, I believe, as well as a short write-up. If you have any questions, I'm absolutely willing to take them, but as this hearing specifically to the 40R application, you, you have the vast majority of it in front of you right now. So, willing to take questions?
If I could add a little bit to what Mr. Fields has said, the, there's been a tremendous amount of work, I would, you know, acknowledge Peg's presence here, she and the rest of the planning board have worked, put in a tremendous amount of work to get the, the project to this point. As David mentioned, quite a bit of outreach with the most affected property owners and businesses within this district. And we are on a timeline for a February special town meeting to consider the changes to the zoning. I think it's safe to say that from this point forward, the outreach and the, sort of the spotlight on this project is going to amplify, culminating with another workshop with the town meeting members prior to the special town meeting. As David noted, the, the, the work that was done in preparation for the December 2017 town meeting, I think, taught staff and the planning board a lot about, you know, where the town meeting was, what, what the issues were going to be. As noted in the memorandum, this is a much larger scale than the previous district. The density across this district is actually lower than what was approved in the previous iteration. The density isn't the same on every lot, it'll vary throughout the district, but overall, they were able to identify what, what the consultant, the planning board, the, the public to date has, has felt was reasonable and appropriate in terms of sort of designing the framework for this area. So I just wanted to note that, there's been a lot of work behind the scenes, and I think it's become, not that it hasn't been a public process to date, but I think they're, they're gonna try to bring as many people into this process moving forward as they can.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bartha.
Where will the $600,000, plus or minus, go?
So the, I can, I can take that, the, when the, when the town meeting approved the first district, the incentive payment came to the town in the form of unrestricted revenue, so the, the money currently is in free cash. The, the discussion at the December seventeenth town meeting was, was that essentially these funds can be reinvested into the downtown with very few strings attached. Some of the examples discussed were creation or improvement to civic space, you could do pedestrian improvements, you could do facade programs on businesses, you could do intersection improvements, it's really sort of the sky, the sky's the limit. At some point, once some, some needs have been identified and some projects have been identified, we would look to set up a special revenue account or a capital account to receive both the previous incentive payment and this new incentive payment, and then it would have to flow through town meeting in terms of appropriating the money out. To date, though, we haven't, you know, we haven't seen projects come through, so there hasn't been anything proposed yet in terms of use of those funds.
Thank you.
I just, I guess, to put a fine point on my rambling answer, they would be targeted and reinvested within the district. And in this case, the district would really extend from Lyons Ambulance and the hot-watt property all the way down to 128.
So then you have approximately $800,000 to reinvest?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So you, you did give us a series of maps, there's not a slideshow here, just a couple of questions for my own edification and maybe other members of the board. The first map shows a lot of green, red, purple. Are these the current designations for these areas, i.e. industrial, commercial, 1A, residential?
Yes, Mr. Bennett, you're correct, that's the current zoning in place today.
Okay. Is there anticipated changes in these areas?
As part-
It's a yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you. The second map shows a W sub-district, HSMU, what are, what's that mean?
Those are the three sub-districts being proposed as part of the zoning, we have-
Could you speak up, please?
Those are the three sub-districts we have proposed as part of the new zoning, it's the downtown core, which is DTC-
In the green.
And the live-work, which is LW.
Live-work?
Live-work, live slash work. So that would be similar to what you currently have over by Page and Cherry Street, where you may have a lawyer's office with some units above, that's kind of the typology we're going for, for buildings. And then High Street Mixed-Use District.
High Street Mixed-Use, thank you.
Is there a particular reason why you left the church as commercial use in the second map?
At this time, we thought it unwise to rezone the church property, it's a Dover use, and it was outside of the district.
What do you mean, it's outside of the, it's in the, within the district that you have outlined initially. I just don't understand why you'd keep a tr, that, that little segment not zoned the same as the other surrounding property, the, your DTC, is it, sub-district?
Your downtown.
Are we talking, just as a clarifier, I think-
St. Mary's Church, Conant Street.
We're talking about, there was, just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, your question, the first question you asked was about a change in the zoning, you weren't, were you asking about the underlying zoning?
Yes.
Would we be changing the zoning as it is today versus an overlay zone, which would be applied on top of the zoning?
Yes. Is that what the intention is?
I do wanna clarify that, I think that's, I wanna make sure I understood the question.
Yeah, so the intention was to leave the church and its associated parking lot as commercial one, which exists elsewhere in town, so it can stay in that district, that zoning district will stay on the books. We just didn't include it in the zoning proposal. There's a few other residential properties in between the two districts that we also did not include, that we felt better off left alone from this proposal. They're single-family residentially zoned, and frankly, they're kind of in between the two existing zones.
Oh, you notice you picked up a parking lot also that's behind the Brothers Restaurant that isn't commercially zoned, and it's residence one, I understand, on the first map. It's the parking lot between Cottage Avenue and Central Avenue. And then the first map, it's not included in the commercial zone, most likely because originally there were four houses there that were torn down to make that parking lot many years ago, and it probably was not commercial in 1961 when those were put in place. But then you've included it in your TD, T, DTC sub-district.
I'm not sure that our reasoning had anything to do with the houses being torn down in the seventies, I think that it has to do with today's present use of it as municipal property and us wanting to have the flexibility to include some of the municipal parking lots for maybe enhancing-
I can appreciate that, I just didn't know why it wasn't included originally.
As David said, I mean, we anticipate, again, the church is a great one, we've kind of struggled, that's gone in, it's gone out, there's reasons to and reasons, you know, to exclude and reasons to include. So as we're going forward, you know, we expect these, these edges to be fine-tuned based on further public comment.
Point of clarity?
Yes.
So, as I read these, I'm, my anticipation or my expectation is not that Map One, which has defined borders for each of the different zoning, and the overlays that you're recommending are going to match. You're gonna, in some cases, the overlay extends past whatever the red, you know, the commercial one, rez one, so on and so forth, and in some cases, it may not include everything that was in a zone. So the overlay is just that, it overlays on top of what's there, doesn't change the underlying zoning itself, but allows for more opportunity, and, and that overlay may have a different footprint than the underlying areas. Is that, is that a correct assumption?
For the 40R, that's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your third map, now we go to red, green, purple, pretty much the same as the prior one with the LW, HSMU?
Correct, so as part of the application, DHCD requires you to submit an existing unit count of what's on the ground today. So most of these districts don't actually allow residential use as a permitted rate, which is why it's significantly less than the next map.
So what is, what does Map Three represent, again?
The number of units on the ground for the existing zoning.
Existing.
Residential, residential units.
Residential. Thank you, David. And your fourth map gets even more colorful, turquoise, pinkish.
Yep.
DHCD likes color.
And what does this represent? Smart Go, residential density plan proposed.
Correct.
So explain that.
That is our full anticipated build-out going forward, should the zoning be put in place. The parcels shown in pink are what DHCD most likely will consider to be substantially developed, meaning they will not count the units on those parcels into their analysis. That's part of the pushback we're going to have with DHCD, is they'll go through individually and classify each parcel, what they think it is in their own internal system, and we can kind of have it out with them as we go along.
They're gonna wanna see more pink.
Yeah, they want more pink.
And, and the HSMU section on the fourth map, what does the pink represent?
The same, substantially developed parcels, or in one instance, we have the parcel that was slated for our DPW expansion.
That's in that pink area?
That by definition, they knock out, even if it's not developed.
It's not residential, but it's just developed.
They knock that out.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you for some more clarification on that. Diane, any questions?
Just a couple. MSTNOD. Is it Maple Street something? Okay, Maple Street-
It's the existing 40R, Maple Street Traditional Overlay Development.
Okay, great.
Maple Street Neighborhood.
So that is what we've already voted on, and that's, the 40R has already been accepted.
Correct.
And then on the last map, the blue with the numbers in it, what do the numbers mean, one through, all kinds, eighty-one or something?
Those are the units that we, if, if that property developed itself to the maximum under the proposed zoning, the unit count on that parcel.
Okay, so when you say they wanna push back more pink, is that when you go in front of them for the 40R application? So the blue is what, the numbers that you're gonna go in and apply, but they're gonna try to eliminate some of that blue because, explain that to me a little better?
Essentially, they'd have to pay us less money if we come up with less units.
It's always money, isn't it?
I think this, the program, shortly after we did the 2017 40R, it was a good thing, the program's been popular, they revised their regulations, 'cause I think there's some pressure from the governor's office to stop just paying out communities for adopting them, they really wanna reserve for production. So I think they tightened up their reg, they formally tightened up their regulations in the spring of 2018 to make it, they've clarified their definitions of what they mean by substantially developed and what's eligible. And again, it's just part of that, they wanna push back a little bit on the community, so they're not just writing checks and not seeing the development, they really wanna make sure that what they approve is going to yield production at the end of the day.
Doesn't that make sense?
And-
It's totally acceptable.
So if, if they, if they push back on the pink, and the people go in front of the planning department, planning board, I'm sorry, and request to develop it anyways, can we, can they put on that they're requiring a 40R to be in that, even though DHCD has not marked it as blue? Is, is that possible to do? Because the 40R is a fantastic thing for us, I mean, it's-
Yeah, so those properties are still available for development, it's just the town won't get a payment when those properties are developed.
But can we still request, can the planning board still request that they do, if they go over ten units and you decide twenty-five percent, can we, can we request, require?
Yes.
Not request, require 40R be in there?
Yes, you're referring to the affordability portion of it?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, so that's a good thing, 'cause that still is a-
And they've also clarified that if any, on any parcel, there's also the, it's a much smaller payment, but they call it the bonus payment, so when a unit gets built, they give you $3,000 per unit actually built, they'll do that all day long. So even if, if they determine that the parcel was substantially developed and they didn't give us a zoning incentive payment for it, if that parcel is developed, you'll get the bonus payment for that redevelopment.
And we get to apply it towards our affordable, which is, which is what we really-
Yeah, they're just trying to limit their exposure upfront for pie-in-the-sky proposals that may not actually be developable on the ground.
Okay. And if I could go to the town manager next. On the fund, I'm not quite sure, I'm curious to see what kind of a fund we're gonna set up for these monies. I do like the direction you're going with it. And I keep going back to that parking study, which half the people haven't read, but it was a great report. Can, because some of those parking lots, and I always liked, as I see in other towns, the connectivity of the lots, in some of those cross over private, would any of that money be allowed if we wanted to assist in making them connected, even though some of it is private? Could we, could we do, is there a way to expend any of that money to get the parking?
Are you talking about physically connecting private lots that are public lots?
Right, so one of the things the study said was to try to connect, we're so broken up, and I'm seeing it in other towns. It does work when some of those parking lots in the back, because we've learned that we want them in the back, are connected. And I keep looking at the lots, and there's not a whole lot that has to be done to make it so they connect. So, I'm just curious if that.
I don't see, go ahead.
I was just going to say, as part of the overall zoning package, the whole thing, not just the 40R, there is an option to share parking between property owners. So either the, a property owner could be going to do a development, they either can't meet their own parking requirements, or for whatever reason, they want to park off-site, they'll have the option to do that. So as part of that, it may be eliminating a simple asphalt burn between two parking lots.
Correct, which is really what I'm seeing, because now I'm so in tune to that study, that we don't really have a major problem to make these connect, which I thought was, I wish, I wish everybody would go back and read it, because it's, it's one of the biggest problems downtown, but there is, it's not a big problem to solve it, so. And then, of course, the pedestrian access is another thing. We don't have great pedestrian access to it, and so, I just, I think that's great that we're gonna expend the funds on the downtown. The 40R is extremely important, and we want to get as much of that as we can. And then, the parking behind, as we learned, buildings come forward, that was one of the first things we learned, and the parking goes behind, so I think you're doing a great job. It's not going fast enough for me, you know, I'm gonna keep complaining.
I think it's going too fast.
No, it's not going too fast, please. I'm gonna be gray. Well, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna actually show gray.
All set?
Yes, thank you.
David?
Thank you, Dan. Fascinating work, nice presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Bill?
Thank you. I'd like to thank you very much for having us obtain maps that were colored correctly and we could actually make them out. Usually we get these various shades of gray from the office, and that's what they were supposed to be. This is great. I got one little minor question on the fourth map. I see the numbers you've got on all the blue squares, that's the potential number of units that you could have. There's one parcel that was missed, and that's where the Vernon's Building is on School Street, it's White Eagle Motors, and there's no number on that. And that's a fairly substantial sized parcel, but I would think you'd be able to get four to six units in that process, that building if they put a second floor on it.
I think there may be a number associated with that, but the shape of it didn't allow it to be labeled, is my guess.
It's a bigger size shape, it's not bigger than the rest of them.
I know, but I'm sure it is.
Do you know this parcel I'm referring to?
We can see it now, yeah.
It's there, yeah.
Because it's blue, it had a positive number associated with it.
I would think that it would, yeah.
I just don't know what it is off the top of my head.
Which may give you more bargaining chips.
We need to submit a whole spreadsheet to DHCD with a parcel-by-parcel version of this map. We thought it was easier to show you the map.
Yeah, no, I just, I just noticed there was one of the parcels, and I'm fairly familiar with that parcel, since my father worked there for many years.
We can check on that.
And the building is a substantial building in size.
There's a number associated with it.
Okay.
For some of these.
What, this one? That's built out of.
Little T and P's at the bottom.
That's a town home, that's under the light wires, you can't build there.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay.
Was that, Bill?
Thank you.
Okay, Gardner?
So now I'm gonna wear two hats, one is selectman hat, one is the chairman of the Affordable Housing Trust hat. If we received approximately $200,000 in 2017 as part of the overlay district that we've already done, is there an opportunity to maybe use some of that money, augment it with some housing trust money, to incentivize people like the building on Locust Street to provide more affordable housing? When it's built, the three hundred thousand, the thirty thousand, the $3,000 that would come back to us can go back to the coffers. So it's sort of like, if we use $3,000 from that 40R fund, added some money from the housing trust, incentivized Locust Street or any other developer, and then returned that $3,000 back, can we use it in a way to, can we start using that money to build up our 40, our DHCD inventory?
The SHI's size.
Yeah.
I think as Mr. Barthin described earlier, those funds are largely unrestricted. I mean, the hope of the planning office was that those be recycled into the district for any number of things, to increase the vitality, the downtown vitality. But certainly, I don't, we're not saying no to that, and that's leveraging those funds for those purposes, for that being what we choose to do.
All right, then I think we have an agenda item for the next Affordable Housing Trust discussion.
That's it?
I am.
Thank you. So, looking into your crystal ball, when this is ready to be developed, is there any thought to putting bump outs for pedestrians and to impede traffic?
Most of that money going forward, we were hoping, we'll see what actually happens in the future, but we were hoping to put back to some sort of traffic in parking mitigation. So, it could be bump outs in one certain location, it may be a new crosswalk, extended sidewalks, more on street parking, less on street parking, depending on the treatment that we need. But rather than allow the developer of the property to dictate what happens outside the building, the planning office, the planning board, and through your input, we could actually determine what's the best fit for the downtown. But yes, to your point, all of those things could absolutely happen. And then in conjunction with our complete streets funding that we hopefully get, those funds could be leveraged even further.
Height restrictions still in place?
Still in place.
Which is?
Forty-five feet, which, just so everyone's aware, a shameless plug, fifty-five feet is the height now in the industrial zone. So anywhere on High Street, you can go fifty-five feet tomorrow.
So there's some people that think Beverly has got the greatest thing going, yet you talk to people in those six-story proposed buildings, it's not what people want to see in their downtown.
That's largely the message we've been hearing. I think forty-five is the right number, and that really depends on what you build to. That doesn't mean every parcel on this map is going to be forty-five feet tall. It would pretty much be the larger ones where you could actually fit a sizable building.
Okay. And to your way of thinking, is there enough historic properties down there to have a cultural district at some point in time?
I believe that's certainly a possibility. We can look into that further. There are a number of historic properties, especially on the north side of Danvers Square. High Street going down, not as much, but.
And as you know, a cultural district enables for grant money to go to historic preservation.
That's correct, yeah. Something we could definitely look into, hopefully after February tenth.
And I think, one just caveat on the forty-five feet, there is a step back, so it's kind of like the concept of a setback, but that occurs on the fourth floor. So again, and in the, not in the 40R application, but in the zoning proposal, there's a rather detail in one section about kind of how you create a street edge and create that canyon-like effect that oftentimes makes people feel claustrophobic in a more built-up environment. So again, we'll have basically three floors possible in some locations fairly close to the street, but then that fourth floor, if you choose to take advantage of it, will be pushed back. And there's again, a diagram in that zoning proposal that kind of shows how that works.
Right, you discussed that in the last project, and it was put in unwrited. And I only bring it up because in, again, Beverly, they had setbacks, and then their planning boards said, don't do the setbacks, go straight up. So I hope that we adhere to those setbacks.
Correct, yeah, that's not what we're looking to do, to duplicate Rancho Street.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I got another question.
Yep, go ahead, please.
I forgot to ask earlier. One of my biggest concerns with this, besides the traffic increase, is parking. And I'm wondering if the monies we're getting back, is there any way that money could be used to incentivize the test borings, et cetera, to explore underground, increase underground parking? We only have underground parking in one building that I know of down in the square right now, but it's also my understanding that it's a prime area, that it's not that wet, it could be drained out easily, it's very good gravel, and you should be able to get increased parking underground that wouldn't affect, would help to mitigate the density that we're looking for, I think. Because otherwise, I don't know how we're gonna get this many, enough cars to support this kind of development.
I think the traffic piece is a different, I segregate the traffic from the parking, but on the parking, they're all gonna have to park themselves one way or another, either, ideally, the first choice of most property owners is gonna be.
Aaron, speak into the microphone, please.
I think we're segregating parking from traffic in this proposal a little bit. The parking, they will have to deal with themselves. They will have to find a way to park the development that they're proposing. Now, as David hinted at, we may allow them to reach across to other properties to satisfy that requirement, but at the end of the day, they will have to find a way to park itself. And if a parking structure underground, above-ground is a solution for them, the zoning doesn't preclude that.
No, we used to allow non-on-site parking, and it was only from a decision reached back many years ago on Endicott Street that disallowed off-site parking, when we had a fatality, people crossing Endicott Street from, what was it, restaurant to a parking lot. You are reinstating that, are you not, up on Locust Street with the ideal baby shoe, with the parking across the street that was there to support that building, so that we actually have a precedent set, or will be setting a precedent, so that people could rely on non-on-site parking for their parking requirements?
Right. In that one, yes, generally, what you just said is absolutely true, the one caveat there is that developer did own both of those parcels.
Oh, I know that, I know that.
But anyway, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't that they borrowed a parking lot.
No, no, I knew they owned both, yeah, yeah. It was bought for parking for it. And that was bought prior to the restriction that was placed by the zoning board on our off-site parking back. I think it was in the nineteen, late sixties, early seventies, when we had a death down on Endicott Street from a person crossing from a restaurant to the parking lot, which the parking lot's still there.
And I think that kind of reiterates our, hopefully, more holistic and comprehensive approach that we're taking with parking and traffic with this proposal, such that, you know, the interface between your private property and the public space, whether that be the sidewalks, the road network, is really part of the proposal. And again, we wanted to try to, typical conventional development would be the developer comes to the table and just tells you how he's going to meet the need, and you may not think it's great, but it's proper. In this case, we're kind of, that's more of a negotiation, and a little bit, we wanted the community to be able to say, well, rather than you dictate that to us, let us, we have a plan for how we want to deal with this, so you just write us the check, and we will make sure that that happens the way that we want to. So it's a little twist on the theme, but hopefully, one that we've used in the past successfully, and I think it'll work very well here in downtown.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience have questions? Please go to the microphone, introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matthew Duggan, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. Both of these projects, Maple Street and the High Street Corridor, both lie within Precinct One. I'm gonna just speak to the High Street Corridor, because that streetscape is more indicative of what we've seen from designs from the fifties and sixties, auto-centric, where you have wide street, traffic moving at a very quick pace, you have commercial buildings setback from the street with parking in the front, lots of curb cuts, a lack of landscaping trees and whatnot. So, I'm kind of concerned about what the vision of the town is going forward. We know from empirical evidence, especially when you get closer to Boston, where single-story commercial buildings are obsolete, that the land that they sit on is so valuable that it makes financial sense for developers to tear the building, existing buildings down, and then just maximize, you know, building out whatever is allowed by right. So, we're talking about a lot of pressure on parking, where I've heard in the past that property owners can leverage municipal parking to satisfy requirements. Today, I think each housing unit requires at least two parking spaces. So, I'm concerned about the increase in density. I understand that the commercial will still be available on the first floors, and then second and third floors will be residential. So, that significantly, significantly increases the density in that area, and along with that is the large, the large number of vehicles that are associated with that. Precinct One is in a lot of pressure throughout the precinct with on-street parking and the lack thereof. A lot of streets are basically single-lane, parking on both sides. So, that's probably the biggest concern I have with this. Zoning sometimes is a lot of gobbledygook to most people, they don't really understand the nuances of what's being presented to them, only after the fact, when these parcels are developed, do people really truly understand the impact that it has on the quality of life. So, I know over by the hot wot, that's still in flux, there really hasn't been any activity there, other than that twenty Locust property, and I think that was already in play prior to that overlay district that was passed by Town Meeting. So, I think I'd be, I'd want to know more from the land use department about what their vision is for the build-out, that they would expect, like, I don't want to say worst-case scenario, but what is, what could we expect to see if all the developers or all the property owners fully leverage what the new zoning overlays would allow them? Like, is that something that's really good for the town, or is it a kind of a mixed bag? I really would like to see that in the upcoming workshops, to see kind of more of a visual presentation about what the streetscape might look at, look like in the future.
Thank you. And I trust that they've heard what you said, and that at the future, there will be more presentation on this. Did you see the save the date? Okay, so, I mean, there's some good questions there to be answered at the future meetings. Thank you. Anybody else, public hearing?
Move a closer public hearing.
Say it aloud, please.
I'm sorry, we, I move a closer public hearing.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, what do you require from us at this point?
I believe a vote is required. Mr. Fields is our technical expert on this, so, no, I'm getting a no.
I didn't think so.
No vote required tonight.
Just hold the hearing, and you have, so.
I think you've checked the proverbial, Mr. Duggan has checked the proverbial box for us by commenting during the public hearing, so.
Very good, thank you. So we'll see everybody on the twenty-second here, yes. Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, David and Aaron, appreciate it.
I'm Peg. Nice to see you.
And Peg?
Thank you. Aaron, do you want to wait for a moment? We're gonna talk about the letter.
Sure.
All right, selectmen's new business. Mr. Trask?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually asked to speak first under this.
You'll speak.
So that, you have received a letter this evening, and I'll just paraphrase what that letter was. As the chairman of the Affordable Housing Trust, we came before you several months ago and identified a parcel of land in town that we thought might be available for building an affordable housing opportunity. We presented it to the selectmen and offered a reasonable sum of money, $126,000, with the provision that if it was not buildable, we'd return it back to the town. Long story short, as we did go out and we hired a wetlands and land management company to look at the parcel, to look at the wetland delineation, to look at the setbacks and other issues related to that parcel, and have determined that it is not subject to being a buildable lot for our purposes. And so with this letter, we'd like to return, thank the selectmen in the town for indulging our request, and return the property back to the town as an unsuitable site for building. Mr. Henry represents us on the board, and the second letter is a letter that he presented with the findings of the Wetlands and Land Management, Inc. report. So, we hope to come before you with some other opportunities in the future, but this is one where we asked for the land, paid the price, and said if it was unbuildable, we'd return it. That was with, we heard from neighbors that that's what they would want us to do as well, so we're wrapping this up with a bow and returning to the town.
Thank you. Any action required by the board, Mr. Town Manager?
Nope.
Nope, okay, good. Thank you, Gardner, for bringing that to our attention. Thank you again. Aaron, any other selectmen with new business?
Is it my turn?
Yep, anybody with new business?
Okay, so, new business or just questions? Do we have it separated here still?
It's new business.
Oh, all right, I guess.
You want to wait?
No, I'll wait for comments, I don't know why we went back to that.
Town Manager will report to the board on various items of interest. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few items tonight. First, just, there's been quite a bit in the news recently on vaping. I wanted to note that on the third, this Thursday, the Board of Health will be discussing the matter at their meeting. When the governor announced the four-month ban on vaping, our police department, the next morning at Roll Call, made a visit to each of the twenty-nine locations in town to have a conversation. Most of the stores removed the product voluntarily before the Board of Health ceased and desist orders were issued last Friday. We have 100% compliance, that's from the Health Department as of today. I believe part of what the Board of Health will be discussing on the third is consideration of a potential. of a potential outright ban. I do believe that considering that there's already a four-month ban in place, and at least one lawsuit has already been filed seeking injunctive action to allow for the sale to, to continue, it's likely that our Board of Health will closely monitor that, but not necessarily take action at this point. But, but it's certainly on their radar, and I think during this four-month period, they are going to be discussing and formulating their, their vision long-term on that topic.
Before you leave that?
Sure.
Did you suggest that our board believes that it has the authority to prohibit, you know, the vaping product beyond the four-month current...
That's something they want to discuss. I believe that'll be with staff input as well as legal input. I don't expect any action this Thursday, but I know it's on their agenda for discussion.
I'm all for it.
So the Board of Selectmen has no say at all on that?
Well, this would be similar to some of the actions taken in the past by the Board of Health related to cigarettes and tanning beds and things of that nature. Where the, where the lines of authority end there, again, I'd, I'd like to get input from staff as well as legal counsel, because this is all happening in real time.
So I, I just want to put my two cents in, in that I hope they wait to find out what happens with the legal action against it, so that we're not turning things back and forth again. We've been through a couple of situations that, you know...
Staff had that very discussion today.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I just, please, let them know that that's how I feel.
Anything else, Steve?
Oh, I have a few other items. Mr. Sam Born is still here. I wanted to update the board. In, over, several meetings ago, one of our local lobstermen came before the board and asked about the potential to store lobster traps during the winter months. At the staff level, we've, we've taken a comb to most of the town-owned properties. We believe we've identified a site that could be suitable for this. The, the, Mr. Raul was, was directed to go and take a look at the property to see if it was going to meet his needs. I, I would note, Chris is our Director of Land Use, or not, wait, sorry, Aaron, I just promoted Chris in your presence. Natural Resources and our Harbor Master did an excellent job reaching out to his counterparts in some of our coastal cities and towns to find out what they do and how they handle this, and he's developed a very good draft policy for consideration. The, the property that appears most suitable, considering its current use of Beale Bell's Grove, we have some paved area on that site that is both gated and currently unused. The, the development of that site is not going to be happening in the next 12 months, certainly. And so on, this, this, if we were to pilot something like this, it would be kind of year-to-year. But we're waiting to hear back from Mr. Raul to see what he thinks of that site, and there would be adequate space there to accommodate more than one person, as well as, we, we do have some recreational lobster, men and women in town who would also be permitted to use a small portion of that if, if it, if it worked out. So just wanted to give the board a brief update on that.
That's great, thanks, Chris.
And we, at the staff level, we discussed that, we think any revenue generated through this could be, we, we know from last year's warrant that we're, we're close to needing to replace our Harbor Master boat, so this would, this would provide us a little bit of revenue to help offset that cost.
Good idea.
Moving forward. Two other updates. As you know, Tracy Wadsworth resigned her position on the Airport Commission. We, we did a social media blitz with, to, to communicate the opportunity. We've had four responses, so we have four individuals who have stepped forward to express interest in that position. We're going to continue to try to draw up interest. The process we followed last time was ultimately to bring the applicants before the Board of Selectmen, probably at one of our November meetings would make sense. My question tonight for the board, you know, certainly the four that have already expressed interest, and if anybody else expressed interest, are there, are there questions or thoughts that you'd like for the candidates to potentially articulate in writing before, coming before the board, or would it be sufficient to have them come and express their interest in person?
Are they sending in a resume?
Well, we, for several of the folks, we have the talent pool forms where they have expressed interest. We could request a resume, and then the question, I guess, would be whether a letter of interest to explain, you know, why they're interested in this opportunity might make sense.
I think that would be appropriate, both resume and letter of intent.
If that is the rule of the board, then we would reach back.
Would the board agree?
Sure.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Great. A couple of quick, just items looking ahead. The meeting on October 15th is shaking out to potentially be a fairly lengthy agenda, and I just wanted to, to note several, we know several of the items. The board did request that several of our local liquor license holders come before the board that night for hearings on potential violations. We've also coordinated with the design team and the committee on the Haybarn project that they will be available to make their presentation on the 15th instead of the 5th. And, and based on some consensus with the Insurance Advisory Committee in the last couple of weeks, we're going to be coming to the board on October 15th to make a presentation and seek action related to some of the health plan considerations for July 1st of next year. All those materials will be, you know, out with the packets, but don't make any plans for nine o'clock on, on the 15th, because we, we have a fairly mealy agenda. And looking ahead, a couple of meetings past that, we've, we've completed three sessions so far of our Citizens Academy. The early reviews have been great, and we are aiming for a graduation ceremony with the Board of Selectmen on November 19th. And Jen Breaker and I were discussing today that if, if you can mark your calendars, if you could be available to arrive 30 minutes early to that meeting, we'd like to give the cadets, as we're calling them, an opportunity to mingle with the Selectmen, and then also take a photo with the Selectmen.
What dates that?
Uh, November 19th.
I won't be here, okay. I don't like photo ops anyways.
I think that's it for me, thank you.
Now, you're not expecting to have that Nov, October 15th meeting any earlier than seven o'clock, are you?
No, so there's a, it's noted on the Selectmen's reminders that we have an executive session for that meeting, we will not need that executive session. We will be having one on November 5th, but not on October 15th.
All right, Steve, thank you. Correspondence and closing statements, where did I leave off with? I can't remember. Bill, you want to go?
Sure, I've got a very brief one. The, normally this time of the year, I shill for our upcoming Topsfield Fair that opens Friday night, at, Friday afternoon at one o'clock, and runs until the 15th of October. This year, we're hoping to have another successful year and a good year. It's fairly dry so far. Our biggest fear right now is the Triple E threat, and we've had the fairgrounds sprayed twice already for that, and there's articles in the paper relative to our general manager addressing that topic. Other than that, we wish you all welcome to the fairgrounds. Right now, we have more parking than we've had for years. As of right now, until it rains again, we have a parking lot in Topsfield at the Ypsiloe River that will take 1,500 cars that we haven't been able to use for many years. So we look forward to seeing you all there sometime in the next week and a half, thank you.
Thank you. David?
Nothing, thank you, David.
Gardner.
Uh, so, Chris stole, and the Town Manager stole some of my thunder, on the River Committee, so I represent the Selectmen on the River Committee, we had a meeting two weeks ago. The base, you have, can get the minutes on the website, but the big topics were Mr. Raul's request about placing lobster traps, which I, they embraced, and continuing discussions about the river erosion, and, and soon on our docket, dredging again. But there's no definitive information, it's more, we're starting the, the process of applying to the various Army Corps of Engineers and state, you know, boards, so on and so forth. Other than that, I don't have any other business, thank you.
Thank you, Gardner. Diane?
Um, so, they, they did the fishing equipment storage, which I'm really thrilled we're doing. I, I really like to keep our fishing industry in, in Danvers. The Downtown Fund, thank you for explaining that. And then the hazardous waste day, I, I realize that I think in my whole life, I've been to the dump five times. I don't like the dump, I never have, but I went for the hazardous waste day. I can't believe how organized, how wonderful. You get there to the front, we have a DPW person guiding you. The whole experience was quite wonderful in that they moved it right along, because I'm there first thing in the morning. And then I needed to go back, I had a couple of propane tanks. The young lady who was, I've only heard complaints about the dump, but the young lady who was inside was amazing. I said to her, "I have those, what do I do?" She said, "Bring them back, they're free, go around, dah dah dah." Everybody was directing you. There was no reason to have any hazardous waste going into our sewer system or into our landfill. It's a very easy process, they move it right along, there's, you know, I don't know, I heard these rumors about these long lines, I didn't see it, and I went back twice. So I just wanted, the DPW, you know, we never, they never hear when they do something right, so I hope that we let them know that the, the fact that the, the, they answer the same question all day, and we all know how frustrating that can be, and yet, they had, the guy had no idea who I was, and couldn't have been more helpful, everybody, so we should let them know that the, the way that they treated the rate payers in Danvers is really great, and it puts a great face on Danvers, so thank you.
Thank you. So just, Danvers Cares will discuss vaping on their Monday morning meeting, that's the agenda, just to have an open discussion. The public health nurse and the police are part of the, um, Danvers Cares, so we'll have some conversation on that. Just, I did some homework last week, and I just want to share some information with the board, and actually, I stole the information from our town clerk, he gave us a report once on liquor violations. And in the years between 2000 and 2013, we had 23 instances of a minor being served, three of over-serving, and one illegality. The Board of Selectmen suspended and held in abeyance three days, or three days or more, 63% of the time. Two days was 15%, and the one day was 22%. And I found that, you know, kind of strange that there would be that discrepancy. In those days, there were some frequent flyers, that's why there were three or plus or more days. One was actually a five-day served and ten in abeyance. Some of those establishments are no longer doing business in town. And I don't know, but 27 violations in 13 years, that's more than one a year, which I found troublesome. And we still continue to get the minors and the over-serving, so I just want to give that information to the board. With that, I would like to thank servicemen, especially Eagle Scout for his signs for the veterans, so remember to thank the veterans. And there is no consent calendar, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, Danvers.[1784.60]